Como High Speech and Debate Team attended the NCFL District Tournament where students competed to qualify for the National Speech Tournament in Washington DC. In order to qualify, students had to place in the top five of their respective events. Como High School took 25 students to the tournament and were able to qualify 22 for Nationals. The most ever. Como also took first place in district team sweepstakes for the fifth year in a row. 22 Lafayette High School students participated in an annual French competition. It's a conference-style immersion weekend that encourages French clubs from high schools statewide to practice their language in fun activities and competitions. The Lafayette High students won first place in creative writing, second place in advanced theater competition, and Chloé Saint Germain Vermilion won a study abroad for French language in Belgium for the summer of 2018. Members of the Board, CodeFest 6.0 is in full swing. We have seven teams from David Thibodeau STEM registered. Other schools are encouraged to register as well. CodeFest opens on April 13th for app development at the Picard Center. For more information, see our webpage, www.lpssonline, or contact Dr. Shawna LeBlanc in our department as well. Reminder that the World Language Task Force will meet tomorrow night, that's Thursday, March 8th at 6:00 PM here in the Board Room. Board members are welcome to attend those meetings. The Special Olympics for Track and Field will be held at ULL Track on Thursday, March 29th. The athletes would love to have your support. The event begins at 9:00 AM. The Regional Science and Engineering Fair took place in February at the University of Louisiana Lafayette. The region is composed of seven parishes: Evangeline, St. Martin, Vermilion, Acadia, Iberia, St. Landry, and Lafayette Parish. Congratulations to Eleanor Zispania from Lafayette Middle School. She was the junior division overall winner. Category winners from Lafayette Middle School are: second place Earth and Environmental Sciences Randy Duhon; first place Plant Sciences Eleanor Zispansie; and second place Plant Sciences Adrienne Mason. Senior division overall winners are Ruth Adams from Como High School, Sophie Zua from Lafayette High, and Zachary Koroski from Como High School. They will be traveling to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania in May to compete at the International Science and Engineering Fair of over 70 countries and approximately 1,500 students sponsored by Intel and the Society for Science. Good luck to all of those students who placed first and second at the State Science and Engineering Fair hosted by LSU. The National Association of Social Workers has established the month of March as Social Work Month. Furthermore, the School Social Work Association of America has identified the week of March 4 through 10 as School Social Work Week to highlight the many contributions of social workers make to schools across the United States. Please join me in thanking the social workers employed by LPSS for their hard work and dedication to making a difference in the lives of our students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Agarwal. Just one brief administrative note for the Board members. In front of your desk, you'll find a work order backlog for the respective schools in your district. And the note, the days aged are also on there. It's just for your information. Next thing on the agenda will be human resources. Personnel changes.
Personnel changes are attached for your review. We have no introductions tonight.
All right. Do we have any new items to be added to the agenda tonight?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of motions. The first one, I move that we add an item to the agenda for discussion and action concerning the 17-minute walkout.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to add an item to the agenda. Do we have any public comment on adding an item to the agenda regarding the 17-minute walkout? Any Board member comment? Mr. Santani.
Could I get an explanation of why this was not added to the agenda yesterday, Monday? Something like that?
Sure. It appears that letters were sent home to middle and possibly elementary school students regarding this item, and I received many phone calls, text messages, Facebook messages, and emails from constituents in my district, so I'm honoring a request for them. And the only way to do that in a public meeting before this event takes place would be to add it to the agenda.
Any other Board member comment? Madam Secretary, call for the vote. This is the vote to add an item to the agenda regarding a 17-minute walkout. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we add a second item to the agenda. I move that we add an item to the agenda to discuss and possibly take action to go into executive session for the pending litigation in matter of Arnold &amp; Associates Inc. versus Lafayette Parish School System et al., suit number 2018149515JDC.
All right, we have a motion and a second to add an item to the agenda regarding a legal matter, which will send the Board into executive session regarding a legal matter on Arnold &amp; Associates interiors. At this time, if we have any public comment on this issue, this would be the time. Yes, sir. Please, if you can, come up to the podium and turn on the microphone. And, sir, the... This motion is purely to vote to go into executive session, so that's what the topic's on.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that my opinion is noted at like that two minutes. But if it's something y'all need to discuss, I don't like to...
Thank you.
I see it's on the agenda.
Any other public comment? Any Board member comment on this item? I'd just like to remind the Board members that this is an item that we do need to address and that we do need a unanimous vote in order to go into executive session to discuss it.
Yeah, just add the item.
Just add the item to the agenda, sorry. All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. President, I move that the Board go into executive session to discuss what's the new agenda item number. I move that we go into executive session to discuss the motion regarding pending litigation in the matter of Arnold &amp; Associates Interiors versus Lafayette Parish School System.
All right, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session to address pending litigation with Arnold &amp; Associates. This is the time now for public comment. If anyone has any public comment, I'm just going into executive session. Okay, Board member comment? Madam Secretary, call for the vote. Any opposed?
Try and figure out what y'all want to do.
We thought we were just doing one. We didn't know you were breaking it up. We weren't prepared for break.
Do it together at the same time.
Just, you know what? Don't do anything. Let's just not do anything. We'll be listening for who did the first and who did the second. And then we'll just leave that one for...
We'll fix it at the end.
Right, we'll just let them float on it. We'll just fix it in a minute, enter, and come back for that one. Because I don't remember who the motion was again. I was trying to think about how you were doing.
So, you know what? Let's just not do anything. We'll be listening for who did the first and who did the second. And then we'll just leave that one for... Right, we'll just let them float on it. We'll just fix it in a minute, enter, and come back for that one. Because I don't remember who the motion was again. I was trying to think about how you were doing.
We didn't know you were breaking it up.
We thought we were just doing one.
We have a motion and a second to go back into regular session. Do we have any public comment? Board member comment? Madam Secretary, call for the vote. Can we get a voice vote to go back into regular session? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, eyes have it, we are back in regular session. I'm now going to go over the consent agenda. My fellow Board members, if you have an item that you'd like to be pulled for further discussion, please let me know. 3.1, School Security Workshop.
I'll pull that.
3.2, Government Transparency Website.
I'll pull that one.
3.3, AFS Sunset Emergent School Request.
And I'll pull that one as well.
3.4, Approval of Resolution 03181928 Youth Art Month.
I'd like to pull that.
3.5, Spot Rezone Elementary... I'm sorry, Evangeline Elementary to Live Oak Elementary. 3.6, Spot Rezone SJ Montgomery Maticulation in Middle School. 3.7, Spot Rezone SJ Montgomery Maticulation High School. 3.8, District and Administrative Calendars 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020. 3.9, Approval of Resolution 03181927. 310, Budget Revision to Self-Funded Construction Fund for LDO Judy's Elementary Additions and Renovations. 311, Approval of FF&amp;E Bids for Milton Elementary Middle. 312, HVAC Maintenance Contract Extension. 313, Sales Tax Collection Report for January 2018. 314, The Purchase of Property Adjacent to Carronco Heights for Future Replacement Expansion. 315, Approval to Advertise and Accept Proposal Speech and Language Therapy Services. 316, Budget Actual Reports February 2018. 317, Lease of Section 16 Land Dusson. 318, Grant Fund Summary February 2018. 319, Approval to Advertise and Accept Proposals Printing and Binding Eureka Math Materials. 320, Request for Qualifications Comprehensive Safety Assessment of LPSS School and Office. 321, Update Project Listing Bonds and Pay As You Go. 322, Alice Boucher Elementary School and JW Fuck Elementary School New Job Descriptions. 323, Pay for Performance Stipend. 324, Policy EDBA Responsibility for Vehicle Operation. 325, Policy EGD Casualty Insurance. 326, New Policy DFAB Industrial Tax Exemptions. Pull that please. 327, Approved Revisions to Policy BC Meetings and Policy BCBI Public Participation in Board Meetings. 328, sorry, Superintendent Approval of Minutes. 329, Preliminary FY19 General Fund Budgeted Revisions and Assumptions. Pull that please. And I have to refresh my screen. Excuse me. 330, Seventeen Minute Walkout. 331, Approval of All Action, oh, excuse me. So all the items, I just want to recap before we go into the approval of the action items. We've pulled 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, 3.5, 3.26, 3.29, and 3.30. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the items not pulled.
Mr. President, I move that we approve all items that pulled.
One second.
Hello? We have a motion in a second to approve all items not pulled from the consent agenda. At this time, it's time for public comment. If you want to comment on any item that was not pulled from the agenda, this would be the time to comment on that item. Okay, we have no public comment. Any board member comment? Mr. Santani.
Dr. Aguilar, I'd like to ask a question about the Pay for Performance Committee. I appreciate the work you and your staff have done over the last month to come up with a solution. How would a, I would assume this will be a committee of teachers and other experts in teacher performance. How would one of our employees ask, sign up to serve on this committee so that there would be input?
So, let me just invite, first of all, the teacher groups to represent the large majority of membership. However, we will also offer an invitation for other parties to either participate in the conversation or maybe to be surveyed with a Google Docs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board member comment on the consent agenda items not pulled? Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Nine, four, none against.
Alright, consent agenda passes. Next item that was, the first item pulled was item 3.1, School Security Workshop. Ms. Morrison?
Just wanted to confirm and let everyone know that we're not making any changes to our SROs at any of the schools. It's a board workshop to look at security and then we'll come up with some recommendations. So just want everyone to know that we're not making any changes at this time. It's just a workshop to look at security at our schools. Thank you.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to conduct a school security workshop on 3.14. Do you have any public comment on the issue of us having a board workshop on 3.14? Any board member comment on the motion to have a board workshop on 3.14? Madam Secretary, call for the vote. Dr. Shasson, we need you to vote, sir. He's right there.
Nine, four, none against.
Alright, thank you. The next item is 3.2, Government Transparency Website. Ms. Morrison? You'd pull that.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve that the board approves the open government proposal and authorize execution of the related contract and the budget revisions of the 2018 Capital Improvement Fund in the amount of $39,000 to fund this project with contract execution to be delayed until the final disposition of the HB29 of the 2018 First Extraordinary Session of Louisiana Legislature is known.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any public comment on the board's motion to approve the open gov proposal? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jonathan Cole, President Lafayette Parish Association of Educators. Mr. President, when I first started attending budget hearings many years ago, I had a head full of curly hair. Now, I'm not saying that my current lack of hair has anything to do with the budget process. What I am saying is that it has been in education each year. The budget here, the massive amount of numbers involved, it becomes a really difficult task for the layperson to understand what's going on. And I can say that LPAE supports financial transparency, you know, as part of the school board's public trust and responsibility for the community's tax dollars. And regardless of what happens with this particular proposal, our hope is that the finances of our school system will continue to be simple, clear, and easily accessible to the community. And as such, we have no objections to the open checkbook program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on this item? Any board member comment? Mr. Angell?
I'd like to remind the gentleman that I, too, at one time, had long curly hair.
At one time, I had hair.
Mr. Santani, your hair?
Used to not be gray.
Yes, sir.
So, I think what Superintendent was about to ask me is, the point I was going to make was that we do know the final disposition of HB29 of the 2018 First Extraordinary Session of the Louisiana Legislature. It passed out of the House of Representatives unanimously, 105 to nothing, which is frankly quite the achievement for this particular Louisiana House of Representatives that they unanimously agreed on. It did not pass out of the House in time, I believe, before, for the Senate to consider it in this session. So, I certainly wanted to wait until we knew what was going to happen with that bill, to see if the state was going to do it on their own, because certainly we would like to participate in something that the state was paying for. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and so I would hope that my colleagues are able to support doing this on our own, too. Because I think this is exceptionally good policy to build trust with the taxpayers of Lafayette Parish. It's, if you haven't visited ohiocheckbook.com, I hope you do very soon, and see what an easy-to-use site it is on your phone, on your tablet, on your computer, to find the level of detail of transaction data that you can find. It will help each and every one of you when it comes to budget time. I promise you that. It'll help me, and I sit there looking at those 300-page PDFs like I have a sickness. You know, it's, I think it's a really good policy for a reasonable price. We have an implementation example already. And, you know, I think our experience of the last year demonstrated, or at least showed to me, that there was a deficit of trust with the taxpayers of this parish. And, you know, I think this is a solid first step in trying to get where we need to be. So, I hope you'll be able to support this.
Mr. Angell?
Yes, I guess I have a question for you, Mr. Santani. It didn't pass in the special session. In fact, not very much of anything passed in a special session, but what, are you saying that it will not come up in the regular session, nor the obvious special session that will be called after the regular session?
I certainly can't give any guarantees that it will not come up, and I think we would be well-positioned to take advantage of it much quicker than most other governmental entities, should the state of Louisiana implement something like this.
But if they approve it, will they pay for it, or will we have to pay for it regardless?
Well, how often does the state tell us to do something and pay for it?
Rest of my case.
Ms. Morrison?
I'd just like to ask Mr. Santani, is the $39,000 a one-time fee, or is there a yearly fee thereafter?
Mr. Gitter, correct me if I'm wrong, it's $24,000 annually? Is that right? Or is it $32,000 annually?
You have that, it's about $26,000, $26,021 annually, and you have a one-time implementation fee of $8,200.
My only comment is I do believe that Lafayette Parish school system would be the first government entity, to my knowledge, that has adopted some sort of open gov-type transparency. So I think we'd be leading the way as far as public entities and trying to improve the public trust and transparency in our budget. So, with that, I don't see any other hands up, so Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Nine, four, none against.
Motion passes. Next item, 3.3, AFS Sunset Emergence School Request. Ms. Morrison?
Mr. President, I move that, if you'll allow me to get to the item, I apologize. Forgive me, one second, Mr. President. No.
I go ahead. I would like to make a motion to not approve item 3.3.
Motion to reject the recommendation. I'd like to second that.
So, Ms. Morrison, just to clarify, your motion is to reject item 3.3, AFS Sunset Emergence Request?
Exactly.
In a second by Mr. Adalgo. Okay, thank you. At this time, we entertain any public comment on the motion to reject the AFS Sunset Emergence School Request. Yes, sir.
Would I be in order to make a substitute motion at this time, or do we need to listen to this one?
Well...
I would like to move that we, in fact, accept the Sunset Emergence Request for a MORO.
Okay, we have a substitute...
MOU, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion in a second to accept the AFS Sunset Emergence School Request.
And my fellow board members, if for no other reason, I think we could at least have some discussion on it.
Okay. Ms. Bujar? Mr. Angell is going to clarify his motion.
That the board authorized the superintendent to enter into negotiations with the AFS Académie Franco-Louisiane de Sunset for creating an MOU to allow for 10 to 12 students to attend the school and allow for MFP dollars to follow the students with negotiated terms and costs of administrative fees. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Angell, substitute motion by Mr. Angell. And the second?
Mr. Santani?
It was Mr. Santani. Okay, now I'd like to ask for public comment. Yes, sir. Can you help with the mic?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Board members, Superintendent. My name's Stephen Ordigo. I live in Carron Crowe, and I've been helping put together everything for this Type 1 charter school in Sunset. And it's something, I think a lot of y'all already know y'all from the time that I served in the legislature. And you'll know that I was always pushing for French immersion for multiple, myriad of reasons, partially because the test scores are 20% better than the non-immersion. Those students in non-immersion, it closes achievement gaps, it raises everybody up. But even more importantly to many people in this area, it's such a, it's our heritage language. It's such a piece of who we are and our identity. It was one of the big reasons why I ran for the legislature was because I saw that we were losing our identity and asked, who are we at the end of the day if we lose our identity? So, after the legislature, I was talking to the mayor of Sunset, and we have a 1920 school there. And I remember whenever, when I was little, I thought it was so odd whenever my grandparents would tell me that they were whipped in schools and punished in schools, even for speaking French on the playgrounds. And I remember whenever I was in the legislature, taking multiple calls from parents whose children were put on the waiting list, who told me that they planned on putting their children in French immersion schools since the day they were born. I remember a woman crying on the phone to me, "I can't get my child into the French immersion school." So it's something that really touches me, and I think it touches all of you all, because that's what you're elected to do, is to make sure that the children are educated. And I saw this opportunity whenever the mayor of Sunset came to me with this 1920 school building. We put together a really great group of people. We wanted to create a 100% French immersion charter school, K through 5, with 220 students. We put together a board, very impressive group of individuals from Southern St. Landry Parish, people of all ages, of all races, of all sexes, that represent that region very well. Northern Lafayette Parish and Southern St. Landry Parish and even Acadia Parish. We put out a request on Facebook to find out what kind of interest there was, an interest survey. And as of right now, we have 72 parents who have told us that they're interested in putting their children in this French immersion program, in this French immersion school. Of those 72, as of right now, we have 11 of them from Carron Crowe. And we have five of them from Lafayette. We also have one from Austin who signed up recently. So, what we did was we also looked at those, and some of those are going into pre-K. We were going to have a pre-K element. And of those, I think six of all of the total 17, six of them would be entering kindergarten or first next year. So, we're talking about just allowing 10 or 12 students to come from Lafayette Parish, from Carron Crowe area mostly, at least that's what the interest survey looks like, to be able to come to this school so that it doesn't really matter what side of Bayou Carron Crowe they live on, that they'd have that opportunity to go to this school. It's going to be, it's going to be very, a new model of French immersion. It's going to be, it's going to be very, a new model of French immersion school that's very cultural-based, that really brings in the French-speaking communities, the Cajun and Creole communities, people of older generations, so that there's more of a connection with the community. And look, Lafayette Parish has done a really good job of expanding French immersion, offering French immersion. They've been doing it for a very long time. And I applaud y'all for everything, everything that y'all are doing. But there's still waiting lists, and there's, you know, it's great, Ms. Morrison was requesting and y'all expanded it to Scott next year, next year, this year, in August of this year, which is great. We really wanted to get one in Scott whenever I was in legislature. But I want to also see that the people from the northern part of the parish that can easily just jump across the bayou and get to Sunset, if they want to go, to allow those kids to go.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Any board member comment? It's just Centeni. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So you mentioned your total enrollment of 220. What grades are you opening, or planning to open in the...
We plan on opening in August with kindergarten, well, pre-, one class of pre-K, two of kindergarten, and one at first.
Okay.
And then every year after that, adding two more grades. Obviously, this 10 to 12 is the first year, and we would like to come back and try to keep on renegotiating. We do want to be a regional school. And by the time they get to fifth grade, I guess this kind of begs the question, what happens after fifth grade? They could, you know, I can't really, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't tell you what's going to happen. But it would be nice for them to be able to matriculate into sixth grade somewhere. St. Landry Parish doesn't offer sixth-grade French immersion as of right now. So you could potentially have, and the majority of these students are not going to be coming from Lafayette Parish, obviously. It's mostly Southern St. Landry, Sunset, Opelousas, some Caeneton and Arnville. But where are those kids going to go when they get to sixth grade? So maybe there's then an opportunity to have discussions to matriculate those students into a school such as maybe Paul Bro.
So you were kind of hinting at, after fifth grade, the St. Landry students may come to Lafayette Parish?
Yeah, it's kind of far away to say that. So it's hard for me to say, yeah, yes. But as of right now, they're...
I mean, we welcome, we welcome, come over right now and have the St. Landry Parish School Board give us that money.
And I understand that you already do that with St. Martin, and I believe it's St. Martin, and maybe Vermillion with a handful of students.
I think so. I think so. So the, you mentioned Carron Crowe and Austin, and so we're talking about Sunset. Are the children, their parents are going to drive them to the school?
We did ask the question in the survey too, if, what kind of transportation, if they would come, even if they didn't have transportation. But we did plan on having transportation, at least pickups, sort of what y'all are doing for immersion students right now, having certain pickups, depending on where the students reside. So yes, we do, we do have a transportation, not a full-out plan, but we do have an idea of more or less what we're going to do as far as transportation.
Did St. Landry Parish give you guys a limit on enrollment?
They have not, tomorrow night, they will vote. They are talking about, we are asking for no limit the first year, and then limiting the amount of students at, and the definition of the students is a little tough, because they enter in kindergarten. So you don't know if they're going to go into your system or not. Some of them might plan on going homeschool, some of them might plan on going to parochial private schools.
All right. Thank you.
Any other board member comment? Ms. Morrison.
Yes, Mr. Ordigo, we're not filled to capacity for French immersion. We made lots of changes, and of course, we're adding a French immersion at West Side, so we're not filled to capacity. So we have room for these students here in Lafayette Parish at our French immersion magnet academies.
Well, I hope, I hope y'all are accepting everyone, because when I got phone calls when I was in legislature, it was not, it's not a nice thing to get a crying parent. So I hope y'all keep on expanding it.
All right. Any other board member comment on this item? Madam Secretary, I call for the vote. Just to clarify for the board, the motion is that the superintendent, that the board authorized the superintendent to enter into negotiations. So a positive vote would authorize the superintendent to enter into negotiations. A negative vote would reject that.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item 3.4, Approval of Resolution 03181928 Youth Art Month. Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes, I pulled that item out of a request from staff, just to be read out loud. So it looks like Ms. Samick is not with us, I don't know. Dr. Aguilar?
Do you have a motion?
Yeah. I'd like to move approval of Resolution 03181928 Youth Art Month.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution 03181928 Youth Art Month. Like, at this point, to open it up to any public comment on the resolution to approve, approval of the resolution of Youth Art Month.
Could I request that we have it read out loud first, or is that out of line?
Oh, I'm going to go in order right now. No comment. All right. Dr. Aguilar?
Youth, Youth Art, Art Month. Whereas art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary, middle, and secondary students, including the following: Whereas art education develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities. Whereas art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, art, and other expressive qualities. Whereas art education gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs. Whereas art education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. Whereas art education interrelates student learning in art productions, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics. And whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences in all students' education. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lafayette Parish School Board does hereby designate the March 2018 as Youth Art Month Certificate.
All right. Do we have any other board member comment? Yes, Ms. Morris?
Last year, the board made the decision to remove photographs from the boardroom here and to display student art. And it appears to me that we have replaced this year with new art, so I just wanted to draw everyone's attention so that if they have the opportunity, because the art is pretty amazing on the walls.
Any other board member comment? Madam Secretary, I'd call for the vote. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 3.5, Spot Rezoning of Evangeline Elementary to Live Oak Elementary.
Mr. President, I motion not to authorize the spot rezoning from Evangeline Elementary to Live Oak at this time.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to not approve a spot rezone from Evangeline Elementary to Live Oak Elementary. This time, I'd like to entertain any public comment on the motion not to authorize a spot rezone of Evangeline to Live Oak. Okay, we have no public comment on this item. Any board member comment on this item? Mr. Broussard?
Mr. President, we have the board and others have some things in place, and perhaps somewhere down the line, we may come back and revisit that. But I'd like to see the, the work we have in place, be placed before we start moving students from one school to another, that's, be more of a strain to, to the school now, then we can handle. But somewhere down the line, we can revisit the spot rezone. But I'd like to see the situation that we've got in place, in place, before we start spot rezoning some of these schools.
Thank you. Any other board member comment on this item? Madam Secretary, I call for the vote. I'm sorry, sorry. Hold off. Dr. Aguilar?
So members of the board, we did invite Mr. Hefner here tonight. Mike, are you willing to show the board exactly the area that we're contemplating prior to your vote?
Yes, sir.
Give me a moment to get the system online here. Okay, what we're looking at doing, we're trying to relieve Evangeline right now. Live Oak has some capacity. Evangeline is still very crowded. That's one reason why we kept fifth grade over at, over at Acadia Middle School, was we didn't have room for fifth graders at Evangeline. The, where you see the heavy black line is, that's what your current zone is, that's in place right now. This would be merely extending it over into the Brown Park area along Ponte Mouton, over to Louisiana Avenue, and still using Interstate 10 as the line. So just extending that, that little projection on the east side of I-49, a little bit further, instead of going to Moss Street, we're going to go, we'd go to Louisiana Avenue. Now, because you have, you have a lot of choice options available for students, not every student in that zone actually goes to Evangeline or would be rezoned. This is a breakdown here of the, of the students, based on their enrollment as of October of this year. You'll see that Evangeline has a total of only, out of the 65 pre-K through 4 that live in that area, only 52 are going to Evangeline. But that would help move almost two sections from Evangeline over to Live Oak. If you look at pre-K 5, there's 53 students, because there's only one sixth grader in that, fifth grader in that area. But you'll see, you've got Acadia Middle, of course, that's part of the zone for it. But Bouchet, you've got three students going there. Broadmoor has one student going out of that area. Carron Crowe Heights has six. And then Falk Plantation and Truman each have one in the pre-K 5 category. So out of the 74 students, you're looking at about 53 of them actually would be moving from Evangeline over to Live Oak, based on your current enrollment. So while it's not a large number of students, it is enough that would provide some relief over to Evangeline. And it gives you the break, the grade breakdown. This is based on this year. So you could advance most of them one grade to, if you want to get an idea what 18 is going to look like. But there's six pre-K, 12 Ks, seven first graders, 11 second graders, seven third graders, nine fourth graders, and one fifth grader. So that's, that's the area that would be affected by the draft spot zone.
Any other board member comment or staff comment?
The only other thing I would add is, Live Oak and Evangeline both have good instructional programs, and we're showing growth in both those schools. The primary reason for staff to present this agenda item was to get a better utilization of space at Live Oak, like Mr. Hefner had suggested. We could potentially take out a temporary building at Evangeline and occupy two classes that are vacant right now at Live Oak. But both schools are good schools and have good things going on. But we do, we're comfortable either way to move forward.
All right. Madam Secretary, I call for the vote. I'd like to remind my board members to read the motion. The motion is that we do not approve the rezoning. So if you vote yes, you're voting to not approve the rezoning. If you vote no, you're voting the opposite.
Negative motions are always tough.
I encourage people in the future to use active verbs, such as reject, things of that nature, instead of trying to contrapositively a verb. Contrapositive.
All right, motion passes. Next item is 326. It is new policy DFAB industrial tax exemptions. And that is Mr. Centeni? Is that correct? Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion to approve new policy DFAB industrial tax exemptions by Ms. Morris, with a second by Ms. Morrison. Any public comment on this item? To approve a new policy DFAB industrial tax exemptions. All right, no public comment. Any board member comment on the item? Mr. Centeni?
I have some questions about, you know, it says, "Before any application for an exemption shall be considered by the school board. The school shall establish standards and criteria under which exemptions may be approved, including but not limited to incentives for job creation or retention of existing jobs." Is this simply, we need to have an agenda item at some future meeting, saying, here are what our standards are? Will that be then written into the policy? Or is this a, or can we live without that paragraph and just basically have a policy that says, we'll take them on a case-by-case basis? I, I'm genuinely curious about how this establishing standards and criteria will work. I would assume that's a question for our attorney. I would assume.
Actually, actually, I believe that, in looking at this item, I believe that we, there might be, have been a mix-up on the version that was placed on the agenda. In this paragraph, that begins with "before any application," that, it should say, "once an application has been received." Comma, the school board shall... Where that comma's placed?
So you're saying the policy should say, "We don't establish standards and criteria until we receive an application?"
Once an application has been received. Right. And then that's when you're going, going to do it.
Well, no, I understand that we can't, we can't evaluate an application before it's received. I'm saying, when do we establish the, I presume, objective standards and criteria by which the application would be judged?
Mr. Centeni?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, just in, in talking with Mr. Hammond, my recommendation to you would be to defer action on this item until we get the corrected policy language from his office.
So the motion's been withdrawn, there's no motion on the floor. All right. Item dies, there's no motion. Next item is 329, Preliminary, yeah, Preliminary FY19 General Fund Budgeted Revenues and Assumptions.
Who else would have pulled this? I move that the board approves the Preliminary Fiscal Year 19 General Fund Budgeted Revenue Assumptions for use in preparing the proposed fiscal year 19 general fund budget.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the Preliminary Fiscal Year 19 General Fund Budget Revisions and Assumptions. fund budget revisions and assumptions by Mr. Santani and a second by Ms. Morrison. Any public comment on the motion to approve these budgeted revisions and assumptions? All right, no public comment. Any board member comment? Mr. Santani?
I would like to just give Mr. Guidry an opportunity to go through the addendum to this. Notice there are footnotes for this documents, one through seven, that I think are worth reviewing orally before we adopt to approve this.
Okay, so, of course, the purpose of this schedule is to give it, provide administration with direction with regards to establishing a proposed budget for revenues. And then, once we have that number, then it's sort of the starting point for our expenditures. So with that said, the first column represents a roll forward of the current year's budget, fiscal year '18. Followed by an adjustments column, which the adjustment column reflects either a budget assumption in the case of the percentage growth or decrease that we use in calculating the revenue, or comments with regards to how are the basis for the adjustments. So with that said, footnote one just explains what I just said about the amounts that are in each column. First column is a roll forward of the current year budget. Second column is the adjustments to get to the third column, which would be the proposed budget for '18-'19. Footnote number two relates to sales taxes, the 1965 and '88 sales taxes that run through the general fund. And basically, that footnote indicates that the budget assumption used in calculating these numbers are a 1% decrease in the actual projected numbers for fiscal year '18. So we had the actual numbers through February, at the time that we prepared it, I'm sorry, through January, at the time that we prepared it. We projected out February through June and then decreased that number by 1%. We also increased expenditures by .12% to reflect anticipated increases in our expenditure line items. So the sum total of those two reflect a net distribution from the sales tax fund to the general fund of 1.12%. And you can see how that compares to the current year's actual through January of 1.2% and a decrease of 1.2% in fiscal year '17 where we had a .7% increase. Also, in the footnote, explain, you know, when you're looking at a decrease and the decrease is from the actual projected, okay? So when I'm comparing or going through the calculations, that 1.12% decrease is a decrease from our actual projected collections fiscal year '18. However, the number that I'm adjusting is a budget number. So, for example, if you take a look at the line item for 1988 sales tax, based on that assumption, you would expect to see a decrease. But the thing to note is, we're adjusting our fiscal year '18 budget to a, an amount that's basically 98.9% of actual projected revenues for the current year. In addition, I'd ask that you note that because of the maturity of bonds that we had in the books, outstanding bonds that have matured this year in fiscal year '18, and new bonds that have come onto the books, from an accounting perspective, there's been a change in the way we're going to have to account for the debt service. There's about $1.3 million in fiscal year '18 and previous years that was transferred directly from the sales tax fund to the debt service fund to fund debt service. That debt is dropping off. And just recently, we've sold bonds and the debt service on those bonds require that same $1.3 million until fiscal year 2020, when our debt service will drop off. And we'll use those funds to fund that debt service. But in the meantime, what you're going to have is that $1.3 million that used to be transferred to debt service from sales tax now goes to the general fund. And then, in the expenditure section, the general fund, you'll see a transfer from the general fund to debt service. So we're just changing, going from sales tax to debt service, to going from sales tax to general fund to debt service. So that's why there's an increase in the, for the 1988 tax. And when we review the expenditure section, we'll see an increase for that same amount and it'll be a wash. So I wanted to explain that. Property tax budget assumptions reflects no increase. We're proposing to budget flat as per our discussion with Mr. Como, our tax assessor. With regards to interest, we're budgeting a $400,000 increase in our interest income, which reflects current rates that we're earning. We've seen a slight increase to our interest rates. Plus, with the recent bond sale, we're going to be reimbursing the general fund for capital projects, construction projects that have been started, that the general fund was basically fronting the money until the bonds were sold. So that money's now in and we'll be earning interest on it. Beyond that, the MFP reflects a $3 million decrease. And that's in anticipation of, the way the calculation works is it takes a look at your property taxes and sales taxes basis from two years ago. Well, property taxes, if you remember in 2016, we had a reassessment. So our property taxes, that was fiscal year 16-'17, our property tax collections went up. So because of that, the impact in '19, which is when those property tax collections are taken into account, there's a two-year delay, our property taxes goes up in that calculation because of the assessment. Because of that, because our local revenues are going up in the property tax area, the MFP or the state funding goes down. So because of that, we're anticipating about a $3 million decrease. We've been, we've seen some emails going back and forth. There is, Bessie currently has an agenda item out that relates to the MFP for '18, yes, '18-'19. One of the emails, a couple of emails I've seen has indicated that there will be an attachment on Friday of this week. So we did indicate in the footnote that this amount will be adjusted. Once we get the actual budget letter, we'll just adjust it to whatever's in Bessie's recommendation. However, we feel that it's going to be at least $3 million. Female reimbursements, of course, which is the line item 16, that was a one-time reimbursement for the expenses that we incurred in fiscal year '17-'18. And then, transfer from other funds, that line item reflects the amount that we've recommended to be transferred from capital improvements. When we presented the capital improvements budget back in February, it reflects that amount, plus a typical transfer that we make annually from Medicaid funds to the general funds to cover LPN salaries. And that basically takes us from our current year budget to the budget that we're proposing for fiscal year '18-'19 for the revenue line items. I'd ask if there are any questions with regards to any of the line items presented.
Looks like we don't have any other questions. Any other board member comment on this item? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Motion passes. The final item on the agenda before we have an executive session is an item titled 17-minute walkout. Mr. Hidalgo added this item, so Mr. Hidalgo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion. Before I do, I would like to preface it with thanking my fellow board members for allowing this item to be put on the agenda tonight. And I'll be happy to explain after the motion if it gets a second. I move that in lieu of the 17-minute walkout scheduled for March 14th, that all schools in Lafayette Parish provide a one-minute moment of silence following the morning announcements to honor the victims of the Florida shooting. In addition to the moment of silence, students and staff shall be allowed to and are encouraged to wear a blue shirt with blue jeans or a uniform bottom on the same day as a symbol of peace and in remembrance of the victims.
We have a motion and a second. Quite long motion, so I'm not going to reread it, but it's about the 17-minute walkout and some specificity on that. Any board member, I'm sorry, any public comment on this item? No public comment on the motion. Any board member comment on this item? Ms. Morrison?
Yes, my primary concern is the lack of notice. I know that initially I got emails asking for students and parents to ask the board to support the 17-minute workout, walkout. And because of the press release that was issued, they are under the belief or understanding that it's been approved. And so there was no reason for them to show up tonight to present their views. So for that reason, I'm going to vote against this motion, not because I necessarily disagree with it, but because I think that we've deprived our students from the opportunity to address their government board in a meaningful way on something that is apparently of great interest and importance to a lot of our students.
Any other board member comment on this item? Mr. Santani?
I am, I was interviewed yesterday and talked about this. I'll say this, I'm very torn and conflicted about it because I got the letter, came home with my elementary school students yesterday. And, you know, I have a six-year-old who thought the lockdown drill that Myrtle Place had yesterday was just fun because his spot in the lockdown drill was on the pillow in the corner. And so he got to flip his chair upside down and run to the pillow. So that's great for a six-year-old. But I have a 10-year-old who quite readily understands exactly what all of this means, the lockdown drill and the 17-minute walkout. And so my concern, because I feel like high school is a little different than elementary school, is that we're going to allow elementary school students to walk out. But I'm going to say, dare say, a majority of them don't understand what it is they're walking out for. And a lot of people can attribute or assign whatever rationale they want to these seven-year-olds and six-year-olds walking out of class for 17 minutes. I honestly don't know what to do with this. I don't think any announcement or any decision is going to make everyone 100% happy. And I appreciate that people have emailed, I'm sure, I'm not the only one, alone with Mr. Hidalgo and Ms. Morrison, to get emails and calls about this. I honestly don't know what to do. I feel on some level that this is getting into the day-to-day operations of schools, which I'm philosophically opposed to. I think our principals are certainly competent enough to make decisions that are best, in the best interests of their students. I know the principal at my children's school sent home, in their letter said it would be used as an educational opportunity. I don't know. It's an awful, awful thing that we're forced to decide here and have to try to play referee with these things. So that's just a comment. I have no, I still don't know at this moment what I'm going to do right here.
Ms. Morrison?
So every child would be required to walk out for 17 minutes, or we require a permission slip, or we'll have a teacher staying in with the students that decides not to and all the others would participate? So it's optional.
I can tell you, at the school my children attend, it is a permission slip is required to leave the classroom. I can't say for all schools, because the letter also stated that the superintendent delegated to the principals to do what they feel was in the best interests of their campus. So.
Ms. Morrison, nobody would be mandated to do this. A lot of our thought process in this was that particularly at the high schools, possibly the middle schools, elementary school less so, that there will be kids that are going to want to take a position on this and potentially walk out of class. And what we wanted to get in front of was that we had supervision and were able to accommodate the numbers of kids that might participate this. In terms of the elementary schools, a lot of the permission slip, that portion of it was, we really wanted to get an idea of who might be partaking so that we can provide the supervision. And it probably will vary from school to school. But we were trying to get out in front of that and not force anyone to do it, to remember the victims. But we also wanted to provide appropriate, safe supervision for children that would participate in it.
Ms. Morrison?
I think it would be a nice thing just to do both, do the 17-minute walkout and a moment of silence. Why can't we do both? Maybe for the students that decide not to participate. There's nothing wrong with doing both.
Ms. Zhao?
Yes, I have a question, I guess, for Mr. Craig or perhaps Dr. Aguilar. But was there any discussion about having the 17-minute walkout prior to or after the classes resumed, thereby not taking any instruction time, but yet still able to do it?
So the, I guess, the national set time for this was 10 o'clock AM. Dr. Aguilar had actually had Mr. Abear get with our MIS department. We still have some emergency instructional time. So we've actually set up a calendar if we move forward with this. The calendar is set up so that the kids are still meeting instructional time required by the state.
Mr. Broussard?
Mr. Craig, with a school like Lafayette High with a student population of almost 2,000, do you believe that that walkout can be monitored and done in a manner to where it wouldn't be disruptive for those who want to take part in the 17-minute and along with that 17-minute moment of silence or give them the option of the students to sit in class and honor it that way? But do you, you know, with a student population of that much, do you think that it can be done in an organized, organized and safe manner? You think they'll take an opportunity to do something else?
Mr. Lattley? Mr. Lattley?
I've heard from both sides, but mostly I've heard, you know, why, you know, walk out of class. I've had more than one principal say, it takes fifteen minutes basically to do a fire drill. That's going outside and coming back in. That's going out and coming in. And I've been involved with the Medicaid Anna because I've been there when they've had a fire drill. So if it takes fifteen minutes to go out and come in, do you stand outside for another seventeen minutes? Now you're at twenty-nine minutes.
And we did. We set it up for a five-minute transition period at the beginning and at the end, and then the seventeen minutes would commence after that five-minute transition period. We had the, I know you're right, it does. You can't just get potentially 1,500 kids outside in fifteen minutes. So we did take that into account. Again, you know, I understand exactly what Mr. Santani's saying. We're trying to be systematic and have a plan in case they do just spontaneously get up and walk out of class.
Mr. Santani?
I can promise you the kids at Lafayette High are going to do it. At least some subset of them, maybe not 2,200, but at least some subset of them are going to do it. And they're, and we may actually get more if we tell them not to do it. So I think perhaps your motion ought to include something about what you're going to do when the kids actually do walk out in defiance of whatever this board decides to do here tonight. What are we going to do?
Is it my turn?
Mr. Hidalgo?
All right. We're going to do nothing. The superintendent will make that decision. I'm going to tell you that I don't represent school, you know, District Six, Mr. Santani, you know that, and I don't represent the staff here. I represent the people at District Nine who have been calling me and messaging me with questions upon questions from, this is the stupidest thing they've ever heard, why are we taking time away from class to do this? Why are we bringing kids outside and announcing that we're doing it? Is my kid going to be allowed to skip school the whole day and get an excused absence because I don't want my kid to be subjected to what's going on? The initial request, the initial information that came through was a request to honor the victims, and that's something that we've done in this parish before. So let me start off by saying it doesn't take seventeen minutes to honor victims. We've done it before with a moment of silence, which is why that's what I'm requesting. The point I want to make is that when folks are calling me and asking me, you know, what is this about? What are you going to do about this? It's my job to bring it to the forefront. So again, I want to thank you for allowing it to be on the agenda. It wasn't just, it's not just parents calling me. I've had law enforcement officials calling me, telling me that this is a stupid idea. I've had principals and teachers calling me, asking me, what are we thinking? So this started off with a request to honor the victims, and then the word test. The wording unfortunately in the press release, which the superintendent and his team worked very hard to put together a well-thought-out press release, and nowhere does it mention anything about violence or gun control or anything. However, every single message, phone call that I've received, the perception out there is that's what it's about. And I am not going to support that or condone that. So that's why my motion here tonight is simply to do what the intent was originally, is to honor the victims by a moment of silence. We don't have to take kids out of the classroom. Nobody, you know, if someone in the classroom decides that they want to meditate on gun control during that one minute, they're welcome to do so. They can treat that minute the way they want. Okay? This is about keeping the kids in school, this is about not disrupting the class, and this is about the parents who care about this issue and are passionate about it. And I'm here representing the people of my district. It doesn't matter how I feel about it. It doesn't matter. I personally was okay with what was being done because I know that it was about safety in schools and it was about honoring the victims. But that is not the perception out there, and that is why my motion here tonight...
That's the point I was going to make. I had parents asking, is this, is this an event to honor? Not honor, take a time to remember the victims, or is this a time to protest? Are we protesting gun control so forth and so on? Or is it to honor, you know, the passing of these students? And I mean, that's something I never want to happen ever again, and it has to stop. I believe we should take time to remember these students. I remember the father who was on TV with President Trump, and the way I felt inside, I don't know how many of you speak French, but like my grandparents used to say, "Some fédrol." How you translate that, Tom?
Makes you feel funny inside.
When he said, "My daughter, my daughter was on the third floor and shot nine times." This is a father telling you his daughter was shot nine times. So I believe we need to do something. The one thing I can tell you that'll help, and we'll use this time, it's not part of the motion, but there was an incident at the Cadena on Monday, I believe, and it was released to the press, there was a weapon at school. The thing that has not been brought up in these instances, and I'm going to bring it up, not just because it happened at the Cadena, two students stood up and went to the SROs. In ten minutes, this thing was done. Student arrested, handcuffed, taken off of campus. Two students stood up. That is the important factor here. When you stand up in these situations, they prevented something. Don't know what we prevented, don't want to know what we prevented. It was stopped, and I think that's the thing we need to publicize more of what can be done to stop this kind of stuff. And these two students, I don't know their name, I don't know who they are, Mr. Lejeune, whatever, ask them to come forward. I'd love for them to come on the board floor because I'd like to shake both of their hands for doing what they did. Sometimes it takes courage for a child to step up and do something. And they did it, and the SROs jumped on it in a hurry. And I just wanted to bring that up, I wanted to bring it up earlier in the meeting, ask for a point of privilege, but that's what I wanted to say on that. But I've got constituents that go both ways. I want to honor the students, I don't want to protest. And I'm kind of like Mr. Santani, kind of torn between the two, not sure 100% what I'm going to do when it comes time to vote. But I believe we ought to do something, and I, you know, in a way I do support what Mr. Hidalgo is saying, the minute, the where the blue. But let us not forget, ever forget, what happened, and let's take some time and pray. I know we've taken God out of schools, but let's take some time and pray that this never happens again.
Mr. Broussard?
I know the seventeen is symbolic of seventeen that lost their life. Would it be possible, having 1,500, 2,000 kids running around the campus, it can be a disaster. Can we do, you said a moment of silence, can we do seventeen minutes of moments of silence at your desk? Would it be, and you would honor the seventeen victims that was brutally killed, murdered, and disallow the students to go outside in a disorderly manner? You would honor the victims in seventeen minutes of silence or prayer, whatever way you want to do?
Well, Mr. Broussard, the answer is yes, it can be done, but I'll suggest that seventeen minutes is quite a long time. You know, one minute is a long time. Originally, I had thirty seconds written down, but, you know, changed it to a minute, and of course, that can be amended, but I think that the idea here is to honor the victims in global as a system, and I think we can accomplish that in one minute. That's just my opinion.
All right, any other board member comment on this item? I'll allow you to speak out of turn.
I'm sorry, I can't help it. I agree with Mr. Hidalgo's suggestion, one minute. Ring the bell at school seventeen times to represent the seventeen lives that were lost. I think that's a better way to honor the students than to have the kids go out in the commons area and just all over the place. They're not going to be sitting there thinking about the kids who passed away, they're going to be gossiping and doing other things, and it will take thirty minutes to do all of that. That's just my suggestion.
Thank you.
I like your suggestion.
Any other board member comment? All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. And while we're voting, I'll just reiterate what I think we heard from the board was that this is not, this was, this intent was strictly about safety and remembrance of the victims and had no other political intentions. So those who want to say that there was some sort of political motion or movement are simply wrong. Yes, ma'am, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
It's on, okay. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name's Maria Smith. I'm a mother at Woodville, a mother of two boys at Woodville. I realized this was on the agenda twenty minutes ago, and I drove to get here because it was important to me. I appreciate y'all's interest in somehow honoring these students. Let me give you a perspective from a parent viewpoint, and I have an eight in a ten-year-old We have already had to have the conversation multiple, and I'm not just off on a tangent, this is relevant. We've already had to have the conversation with my boys at six and eight about gun violence because we live two blocks from the Grand Theater shooting. We've already had to have this conversation with the boys after Newtown. We've already had to have this conversation when other school shootings have happened. My kids are too young to deal with this, and yet they must. I think the superintendent's or whoever's statement it was that went out through the news media and has been widely shared on social media, gave parents plenty of time to make a thoughtful decision about what am I going to say to my children? If you're an involved parent, you will have already spoken to your children about this. And the kids that are getting it second and third hand from school have non-involved parents. Goodness knows, we need more involved parents. But those parents that have already addressed this, have already taken the time to tell the kids, like I did, what a school shooting is, what a walkout is, and that whatever action you take, there's going to be consequences. This is absolutely a perfect opportunity for our kids to learn. There's a lot of outrage these days with us forcing our kids to do this Common Core rote work or endless worksheets, non-creative independent thinking, and consequenceless time in the classroom that this is endless non-consequences. Okay? But this is the perfect opportunity to tell the kids, if you want to make a statement about what's happening or what could happen, what's happening in our nation, or what you could, what could happen, these kids, most of them, all but the seventeen and eighteen-year-olds, don't have time, won't have a chance to vote on anything that relates to this. So elementary school kids who have already been faced with this possibility now have an opportunity to think over, will I stand up and walk out? Does this matter? Do I think this will change things if I stand up and walk out? I gave my kids this talk last week when the announcement came out, and I told them, you're going to have to decide whether you walk out or not. And let me tell you, even if there were consequences, disciplinary consequences, you'd still have to decide on whether or not you're going to stand up and walk out. But this is the chance that we have for our kids to see and understand that what they do matters on a daily basis. I think, yes, it's a long time, seventeen minutes. It may well be controlled chaos. It cannot be more chaotic than the horror of these shootings that are happening over and over again. Give our kids a chance to have a reaction, a time. I think the bell tolling seventeen times is perfect to set the tone for those kids, that this isn't a joke, it isn't playtime, it isn't gossip time. That, plus I think since the news has already gone out, that there'll be seventeen minutes allowed without a disciplinary consequence to change it today, is kind of pulling the rug out from under parents and students who have already looked at it, you know? As of this morning, my children had not made a decision to change, to walk out or not. But my children are thinking about it, and my children have used what they've heard from me and what they've heard in class, and they are right now studying, both my kids right now are reading and studying and taking tests on the civil rights movement, on the rule of law, on how good citizens participate. My kid just literally took a test on this, on how good citizens participate in the society and contribute. Let's give them a chance to put that into play. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. All right, any other board member comments? For our call for the vote. All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Motion passes. We do have two more items, board members, for executive session. Just so the public knows, the rest of the meeting will be in the executive session, then we'll come back out after executive session, assuming that there's a motion to approve going into it.
It's a little more complicated. Mr. President, I move that we go into executive session to discuss item 4.2, strategy session concerning threatened litigation, and item 4.3, consideration of the matters, Pat Cooper versus Lafayette Parish School Board, number 2014-5941, Division K, and Pat Cooper versus Lafayette Parish School Board, number 2014-5116, Division G, on the records of the 15th Judicial District Court.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. The votes. Ayes have it. We're going into the executive session, thank you. We're going into executive session, thank you. We're going into executive session, thank you.
they had to put a website, put a blog, and, yeah.
Yeah, once a bunch of provisions slip through.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Yeah, there, there wasn't, if, if, you're saying, or if you needed to get an idea of who's gonna be participants so that we can make a nomination.
Yeah.
Joseph is past his bedtime.
So, so what time are you up in the morning? Well, like I said, I was gonna text you, let me talk to Doc about, in terms of a disciplinary.
Seven minutes?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, any time.
Yeah, I'll just, whenever, 'cause I'll talk to him probably about seven in the mornings.
Yeah.
And just make sure that we're consistent with that and then I'll just, I'll send a text.
I might post something online tonight, just saying what your board voted, but then we can amend that, like tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I think, I think the first part, overall, I'm in agreement, I think, like I said, I, I, I anticipate his, what I was just telling him, if they just go out and call, they're, why, absolutely, yeah, if they start chunking their bottles in windows and standing on Congress, I mean, or blocking traffic, I mean, that would be something different.
But that would probably be disciplined no matter what.
Yeah, that's, that's unsafe behavior.
Yeah.
And that's how, that's how you categorize that.
I'll probably do something tonight just about what your board voted on, about the, the silence.
And you might say, "We're gonna speak to staff to clarify their discipline or their position on this."
Okay, I can put that in.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Uh huh.
I'm going, I'm going home too. Scare my car along.
I don't know, I'm not high on it.
So, uh, that sort of off, that sort of off, probably that's the thing.
So, uh, I mean, we said to the end, it's it's hard to be, they have to know, you know, they have to put a website, put a form, the money, but uh, it is uh, uh, and so that would be a button part. See how the board acts, how they actually do some things, uh, that would be the cap, you know, they'll be able to uh, it's not more of a retail. Yeah, I'll, I'll get it.
You were too, you were.
I'm going to use yours. Where is, where is that? It's there. Or that means more.